Okay, well, welcome everybody to the May 26, 2020 Cobb County Board of Commissioners regular meeting. And before we get started, I'd like, in order to formally approve the format for this meeting, I need to have county attorney read the language that allows us to have the meeting virtually.
Thank you, Chairman. Bill Rowling here, the county attorney. Meeting with the clerk here is part of the meeting as well. Our IS department, as well as our communications department, working endlessly to try to participate and have virtual participation in this current meeting. I suggest that both the VOC staff, as well as citizens, are participating virtually. Arrangements have been made for virtual public participation of both the public comment component of the hearing, as well as the public hearing component of the meeting. To that end, Chairman, I would suggest that the unprecedented circumstances of COVID-19 pandemic, that you make the following changes to your VOC meeting rules for this May 26, 2020 Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. First, that the VOC staff and citizens be allowed to participate in the meeting virtually and allow the VOC members to be able to vote by voice or by hand signal. Otherwise, that your VOC regular meeting rules would apply, except as modified during the normal course of the meeting pursuant to the rules.
Okay, so I make a motion. So move, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Burrow, any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. And it passes five to zero, thank you. Okay, with that, I'd like everybody to, I had the flag behind us, I'd like to do the same thing on last time, stand up in a place of allegiance, and then afterwards, I'll ask for a moment of quiet meditation, and then I'll start the meeting. So those who will and able, please stand. With present allegiance, to the floor, the United States of America, to the floor, with which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited, and justiciable. Amen. Okay, can everybody hear me okay? Can the commissioners hear me all right? Okay, good. The reason I'm wearing a mask is I'm in the room here with the county manager, just for, you know, precautions, just to be safe, I'll be wearing the mask here during the meeting. You may see me drop out of the picture, but I'm over here in the corner, so I'll be in the room the whole time, listening to all the comments, in case you can't see me. So with that, the first order of business is a public hearing to conduct and approve the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance for construction of a single-family residence at 3554 Cochise Drive. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to Jessica Green.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Good afternoon, everyone. As the chairman stated, this is a single-family residence at 3554 Cochise Drive. The property is located in the Chattahoochee Corridor, so it is subject to review under the Metropolitan River Protection Act. They're tearing down an existing single-family residence and rebuilding. The AOC, the Atlanta Regional Commission, has reviewed the plans and has determined that this is consistent with the plan, and at this point, we need to have a public hearing.
Okay, everybody know the rules? I'm sure you know most of them by now. Unlimited number of speakers. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. That means that when you speak, let us know who you are and where you live. So with that, I now declare this public hearing open to consider the approval of a Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate of Compliance for construction of a single-family residence at 3554 Cochise Drive. And our first speaker is...
Robert Landers is our first speaker.
Okay.
Robert Landers is not on the phone. Dan White is on the phone.
Okay, Mr. White.
Hi, thank you. This was not, relative to this, I was trying to get a conversation from this morning meeting for public comment, and it was regarding the proposed land at a different location. So the public comment really is not relevant for this, but it is relevant to the idea around the proposed land that is being converted into a alleged Tokyo Valentino. Thank you for the opportunity to participate in this call, which I would have liked to have done on a 9:00 AM call. Thank you, Bob Otte, for your consideration and diligence in the service to Cobb County, and specifically to District 2. And I just wanted to let everyone know that we would be remiss if we didn't let you know that achange.org petition has been filed for 1,275 participants and over 2,825 people in District 2 that are opposed to the alleged location being filed under clothing ink, with the owner being the owner or participant or business owner of Tokyo Valentino. While we're opposed to it, we understand and respect the law. We are concerned for this location specifically, because its location, which has been misquoted at .5 miles away from an elementary school, is actually .05 miles away from an elementary school, and a heavily family location. While it is commercial, it is not thoroughfare commercial. I would imagine that is more family or residential commercial than it is in this area. And at this stage, the only thing I would like to see is whether or not any actions that the community may be able to take, or any actions that the county may take, to halt or stall this from opening. As we know, that the opportunity for these businesses in the past, on Cheshire Bridge, as well as in Roswell, is to get it opened and then make it very difficult to get it closed. And with an online business around the business, as well as the brick-and-mortar footprint, it will make it very difficult for this business to go away after it is open. Even if it does in fact close, would act as an advertising location for the online business, which would be detrimental to the entire location. That's all my comment. I just wanted to make sure I could represent the interest of the change.org, and again, I appreciate Mr. Otte, Commissioner Otte, for his time and his dedication, especially to the weekend and for the long-term service to District 2.
Is Mr. Landers on the phone? I asked, do we have Mr. Landers there?
Mr. Landers is not on the phone.
Do we have anybody else that's signed up for the public hearing regarding the Chattahoochee Corridor Plan Certificate for 3554 Cochise Drive?
We do not.
Okay, hearing none. I want to declare this public hearing officially closed. And Commissioner Otte?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In light of the fact that the Atlanta Regional Commission has sent a letter to you and to Dave Brayden, saying that they are comfortable with the proposal, I make a motion that we approve the Chattahoochee River Corridor Plan for this property as presented in the agenda.
Do we have a second? We have a second?
Second, second.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
This public hearing is for the Chattahoochee Corridor, Cochise Drive address, but the comments were for another item. Should we have done that during this public hearing?
Well, it took me a while to figure out what he was talking about, and by the time I recognized it's going, it was too far to comment, so I let it go. I realized that when he had his comments, were not about this property, so. All right, any further discussion? A call question, please raise your hand. And I see four...
I'm not voting for this. I can't approve this one.
Okay, so all in favor, raise your hand, please. I see three now, all opposed. I see two opposed, so the motion passes three to two, with Commissioner Burrow and Dambrell in opposition.
Chairman, just for clarification, we had our work session this morning, we were only aware of two speakers, correct?
Correct.
That wanted to speak on this agenda item.
Correct.
Did those speakers contact, are they on the line waiting to speak, or have they not called in?
Commissioner Dambrell, one of the speakers, Mr. White, who just spoke, who had, like he said, he had mistakenly signed up for the wrong time. The other one, Mr. Landers, who we've inquired about a couple of times with IS, and he's not on the line.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on the public comment, Mr. Rowling, understand we have 18 speakers.
We have 16 speakers. 16 speakers.
I'm sorry?
Yes, so we have 16 speakers. It's my understanding that the board wishes to hear all of them, is that correct?
That's correct, and they all get four minutes.
Each of them have four minutes, okay.
That's what we agreed on this morning in the agenda prep by the board.
All right, is that, can we formalize that why the board voted today?
Okay, all in favor of revising the time limit for public comment to four minutes, please raise your right, make your right hand. Okay, it's five to zero, thank you.
The first public speaker, chairman, is Teresa Hubbard.
Teresa Hubbard and JB Hocker Smith are not on the line. Your first speaker will be Tyler Smith.
Mr. Smith, you have four minutes.
Thank you. My name is Tyler Smith, I'm an attorney. My wife and I live off Oakdale Road, which is a passwork of District 2 and 4 in the city of Smyrna, Ward 7. I'd like to make a brief comment on the SPOSS project list. First, I support the SPOSS renewal, but I'm very concerned about the lack of public input in putting together the project list, which potentially divides up hundreds of millions of dollars over the next several years. While I understand that the in-person meetings were not possible due to the health crisis, I request that the Board of Commissioners consider online surveys or open houses before finalizing the list. Second, on behalf of myself and many residents of Oakdale, Buckner, and Pebblebrook Roads, I request that the county work with the city of Smyrna to add, as a project, improvements to the intersection of Oakdale and Buckner Road. Oakdale and Buckner Road is a major road corridor. In this part of the county, there's several subdivisions, a public and private school, and several industries, including a brick factory and a FedEx distribution center. This Oakdale-Buckner area has a severe traffic safety and congestion problem, which is well-known and has been documented on several county and regional plans. Various projects have been recommended, and some placed on SPOSS as Tier 2 projects on past SPOSS, but none have materialized or been implemented. I'm asking the board to please make this a priority project on the 2022 SPOSS final list. This request is based on a December 2019 study, which was recently completed by Georgia Tech and commissioned by the Cobb DOT. The study, which was completed in December of 2019, found that the Oakdale-Buckner intersection is, quote, obsolete, can no longer meet growing demands, and leads to unsafe driving practices. The study found that traffic backs up for more than a mile and a half in various directions, and that, quote, "Locals felt so strongly about the failure of this intersection that they would routinely roll down their windows while waiting in the traffic to initiate a conversation with the engineers about the issues and their ideas for solutions." The DOT selected one of the six design alternatives, which would cost approximately $4.9 million, would improve traffic and control delay by up to 89%. It would involve roadway and bridge widening to construct through lanes and turn lanes. This project was not placed on the 2020 SPOSS list, either as Tier 2 or Tier 1 or Tier 2. This is very disappointing, given the existing and well-known traffic problem and the study which was completed. I request that the county work with the city to include this project on the final SPOSS list as a joint federal-state-local-match project. This project would greatly improve quality of life for many longtime taxpayers in District 2 and 4, and make residents more likely to support development in the area, with this area being one which has been recently focused on by developers. I know the residents would be immensely thankful for this project to be included and for it to move forward. If added to the final list, I personally pledge to work hard this fall to organize support in my community for the SPOSS. Thank you for your consideration of this comment and for your service to our community.
Thank you, sir.
Teresa Hubbard or JB Hocker Smith join the call?
Neither have joined.
Okay, I'm going to continue down the list if they come back in, let us know, please.
Okay.
Next speaker is Hill Wright.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, you have four minutes.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I have a few different topics to address today. First is the 1290 clothing store that applied as a family clothing store, enlisted clothing, undergarments, and miscellaneous merchandise on the business license application. Yet this will operate as Tokyo Valentino erotic. This entity has used deception to apply for its business license to avoid 35 pages of Cobb County Code, zoning, and strict licensing requirements. In Sandy Springs, they used the same deception applied to sell dance wear and operated to sell erotic merchandise. The entity has broken laws in the past with regard to selling erotic merchandise. This entity has violated court orders. That's why I believe a straw man, instead of the owner of the LLC, applied for the business license, because the actual entity was not qualified under county code to apply for a business license. One commissioner has been quoted as saying, "I've gotten 500 emails, and there's nothing we can do." I believe there are multiple grounds for invalidating the business license in this case. All of the board members need to get involved to protect the community. Expect to get 5,000 emails and phone calls unless there's action. In addition, the application process needs to be changed to specifically detect these things. I'm concerned about the, I'd like to address the small business grants program as well. I'm concerned about the following points. There's nothing in memorandum of understanding that says a business does not need to be a Cobb Chamber member, or that potential treatment will be given to, preferential treatment will be given to Cobb Chamber Commerce members. In the PPP, the Bank of America required customers to be customers, and then went to customers at small banks and used the requirement to recruit customers. As memorandum of understanding is written, a 1099 self-employed sole proprietorship cannot apply. A business must have, because of the following provisions. A business must have W-2 employees. A business must submit Form 941, which is for employee payroll. Business must be located in an owned or leased commercial space. 60% of grant money is supposed to be spent on personnel rehiring or maintaining employees, but self-employment, sole proprietorships are not employees, yet they are still impacted. Therein this needs to be addressed to allow self-employed and sole proprietorship independent contractor businesses to apply. Businesses that remain impacted are subject to clawback time limits without knowing how the clients they depend on will remain impacted. Businesses that have special circumstances, such as prior illness of owner or immediate family, may have impacted prior year income and should be able to use balance sheets from 2020 or years prior to 2018 to demonstrate business income in special circumstances such as illness. The final topic I'd like to address is I believe that other future needs that seem to be forgotten have been forgotten. For example, poll workers need to have PPE they will need for runoff or fall election cycles. I purchased and donated 1,400 surgical-type masks this morning for the poll workers to get them through the primary. Don't forget the poll workers' PPE needs and other future needs like this. Save some money for later, too. Thank you for your time.
Chairman, the next registered speaker is Giovanni Soriano.
All right, and I want to thank the previous speaker for his comments.
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners and Chairman. My name is Giovanni Soriano, and today, what I'm here to urge you, once more, is to take a stand against the 27-year program. This program has deteriorated the trust between law enforcement and the immigrant community. During this pandemic, we had lots of community members who, through the 27-year program, was detained and sent to Stewart Detention Center. Santiago Banton, a 26-year-old from Marietta, due to a traffic infraction on March 2nd, 2020, was detained and then transferred to Stewart Detention Center, where he contracted COVID-19. He passed away this past Sunday at 5:00 AM in the morning. And so I urge you to stand on the right side of history and fight against the 27-year program. I know the sheriff is an elected official, but the Board of Commissioners were also elected to represent us. So I have to stand together and fight against an oppressive regimen conducted by Sheriff Warren that is discriminatory and whose administration has caused the death of not only Santiago Banton, but since inmates on his county jail. The 27-year programs have broken many families apart, so it's time for us, Cobb County, to show Georgia that we do welcome our immigrant community and not just travel in empty wards. And also to use our taxpayer dollars to move forward and invest in a program that criminalizes and breaks families apart. So I urge to end the 27-year program. And thanks so much for your time, and I appreciate everything that you guys are doing to keep Cobb County safe as well.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Soriano.
Chairman, the next speaker is Amy Barnes.
Hi, I'm not sure if you can hear me yet or not. My name is Amy Barnes, and I'm from Marietta, that's Cupid's District. Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, all right. I have a couple of comments about the proposed lawsuit settlement. I noticed on the agenda, there is to be a settlement of a particular case, 112-C as in CAT, V as in Victor, -03640. My concern is that those who were adversely impacted by these predatory lending practices might not receive any benefits under the settlement terms and conditions. I find it quite odd not to see anything regarding assisting those who have been victimized by HSBC. That was my concern about the settlement, and there's not really much being disclosed to the citizens of this county regarding that settlement. My comment on that particular piece is done. I do have a second comment regarding possible litigation risk. I notice that there is a Star C funding designed to mitigate eviction. Now, when I read the specifics on this program, I notice it is only for apartment communities, and none of this funding seems to be directed towards preserving the residency of tenants who are in single or multifamily homes. I find this to be not acceptable, that it might constitute an unfair practice. Sorry, my dog is interrupting me right now. That it is, it might be considered discriminatory, because a large variety of landlords that are holding on to single-family homes will be more lenient towards tenants. Now, this is possibly disenfranchising landlords who have these homes. And I think it is unfair to pad the pockets of the wealthy and not consider those landlords who are owning single or duplexes or quadplexes. So the irony of this is that Cobb County is engaged in litigation allegedly in consideration of those who are impoverished, disenfranchised, and subject unfair practices, while in turn appearing to pad the pockets of the wealthy. No, sorry, my dog. That's my comment on the Star C funding. And the other thing I have an issue with is traffic lights. I'm coming across these turn signals that are one second long. I can't even react in a second time. So I would like for Cobb County DOT to review their traffic lights and see about increasing the turn lane signal to a minimum of three seconds, if that is possible, because I cannot react in one second.
Ms. Barnes, Ms. Barnes, your time's up, thank you.
Thank you.
One of the next speakers, Bobby Ralston.
Bobby Ralston has not joined the call.
The next speaker on the list is Daniel Fitzgerald.
Here.
Mr. Fitzgerald, you have four minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners. As a concerned citizen of Cobb County, I raise questions about the legitimacy of the business proposed to open on 1290 Johnson Ferry Road. In my opinion, it breaks the Cobb Code of Ordinances, as well as federal and state obscenity laws, and should therefore be forbidden to operate. My argument is as follows. In the Cobb Code of Ordinances, Part 1, Chapter 78, Article 3, Division 8, Subdivision 2, Section 78-353, Minimum Distance from Certain Uses, states that no adult entertainment establishment shall be located within the following distances, as defined by and measured, as stated in this division. B, within 1,000 feet of a church, school, governmentally-owned or operated building, library, civic center, park, hospital, community club, or prison. Section 78-321 defines a hospital as "a building or portion thereof designed and used for therapeutic treatment of bed patients who are physically or mentally impaired." treatment of bed patients who are physically or mentally ill. Manor care at 4360 Johnson Ferry Place meets this definition since it is a rehab facility providing therapeutic treatment to those who are physically ill. Manor care is within 500 feet of the building on 1290 Johnson Ferry Road according to the stipulations for measurement defined by the code and as measured on Google Maps. That proposed establishment on 2090 Johnson Ferry Road is within the definition of adult entertainment establishment as is clear from the justification in the preamble, Section 78-320, which states, "Whereas it is not the intent of the Board of Commissioners in enacting this ordinance to deny any person the right to speech or expression protected under the United States or Georgia constitutions, nor is it the intent to deny or restrict the rights of any adult to obtain or view any sexually oriented performance or materials protected by the United States or Georgia constitutions, but to adopt content neutral ordinances to combat the undesirable secondary effects of adult entertainment where alcoholic beverages are served or consumed. And the Board of Commissioners further finds that other forms of adult establishments, including but not limited to adult bookstores, adult novelty shops, adult video stores, peep shows, and adult theaters, have an adverse effect on the quality of life in the surrounding communities. The Board of Commissioners finds that the negative secondary effects of adult establishments upon the community in the county are similar whether this business features live nude dancing, sells books, videotapes, or other media depicting sexual activities or sexual devices, or allows the exhibition of sexually explicit films or videos on the premises of the adult entertainment establishment. Therefore, the proposed establishment on 1290 is in violation. Further, such an establishment," I missed someplace on there, it mentions adult novelty stores as being one of the things that are justified, "in distributing hardcore pornography, which I'm not entirely sure the intentions of the establishment there, but on other locations that is at least viewed, which, the definition of which in layman's terms, is recording with little, no intrinsic artistic value. That is, it's entirely focused on portraying sexual acts and has little cultural value otherwise in violation of state and federal obscenity laws. Countless court cases have upheld that hardcore pornography is not protected under the First Amendment." Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Mr. Fitzgerald, your four minutes are up.
Thank you.
The next public speaker chairman is Lisa Sims.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You have four minutes.
Thank you. Dear Commissioners, yes, my name is Lisa Sims, and I've been a resident of East Cobb for over 20 years, and I'm here today to address the new establishment that obtained a business license under the name of 1290 Clothing, located at 1290 Johnson Ferry Road, a former location of mattress firm directly across the street from Merchant's Walk Shopping Center. So why would I be concerned about a clothing company? So this so-called clothing business, 1290 Clothing, is under the umbrella of a company named Cheshire Bridge Holdings. Also under Cheshire Bridge Holdings is a business called Tokyo Valentino. To get a sense for the type of business, I'll quote directly from their website. Tokyo Valentino Erotic, established in 1995, has the largest selection of adult-related toys, products, lingerie, bondage gear, and smokeshop selection in the southeast. So I suppose the lingerie and bondage gear could qualify as clothing. But their website goes further to describe as the booths are always crowded and the location is open 24/7. So who owns Cheshire Bridge Holdings? It's a man by the name of Michael Morrison. In 2005, Morrison was sentenced to three years, 10 months in federal prison for submitting a false and fraudulent tax return, resulting in a tax loss of $1.4 million to the United States. So note that a person by the name of Tamika Hughley actually applied for that 1290 clothing business license, and even though it's under Michael Morrison's Cheshire Bridge umbrella, he claims he knew nothing about it, per East Cobb news. Doesn't it seem odd that a person with this background would simply want to open a clothing store? Knowing what we know about this holding company, we can be assured this clothing company is much more than the name implies. It is an adult sex shop with video booths open 24/7. So imagine during your daily activities how our children will pass by this establishment to and from school, church, sports activities, dining, and shopping. Perhaps we should all start now in getting our messages ready for how we'll explain this to our children. I suspect those moving, considering a move to East Cobb once passing by this business may reconsider. And I also expect our property values will plummet and our families will suffer grave consequences. It is proven that these types of establishments fuel sex trafficking. As a parent, this scares me to take action, and I have two final important points to make. Is it that easy to file for a business license deceptively as a clothing store when it clearly does not appear to be simply a clothing store? And secondly, is the broader issue of zoning. My understanding is that this building is in a general commercial zone. If you look up Section 18.62020G, you will see a detailed description of what it includes. Businesses permitted like antique stores, bowling alleys, pet shops, and clothing stores. Uses prohibited include adult-oriented businesses seemingly very similar to the Tokyo Valentino business. I noticed a clause that prevents a person filing the application who's been convicted of a felony directly associated with the operation of an adult-oriented business. Perhaps having Tamika Hughley apply for this business license averts this issue. If you do a search for Michael Morrison, you'll find that he's a master at zoning loopholes. Just ask the city of Atlanta. If we do not address this now, Commissioners, get ready. This may be the first of this type of business trying to establish roots in our East Cobb community, but it is not the last. It will spread like the coronavirus. This is a plea for you to investigate fully our zoning laws and the unethical, seemingly illegal ways of filing a business license.
Ms. Sims, I'm sorry, Ms. Sims, your four minutes are up.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next speaker chairman is Ray Thomas.
Ray Thomas is not on the line.
The next one is Carrie Chester.
Carrie Chastner is not on the line.
The next one to sign up is Lord Tildor.
Lord Tildor is not on the line.
Annette Lewis.
Annette Lewis is not on the line.
The next public speaker is Ed Richardson.
Hello, this is Ed Richardson. Where most of you, dear Commissioners, where most of you know me from my volunteer work on the South Cobb Redevelopment Authority, I'm coming to you today to speak as a Cobb-based small business owner to comment on the proposed small business grant program. Given the disproportionate impact of COVID-19 on minority communities in Cobb County, I'm encouraging you and the Board of Commissioners to modify the proposed MOU to include language that ensures that minority-owned businesses in Cobb are given the utmost consideration during the distribution of the grant funds. As local and national reports have highlighted, racial disparities in health outcomes and economic impacts have been exposed and exacerbated by this pandemic. According to a recent CDC study of the COVID-19 patients in Georgia who were hospitalized in March 2020, over 80% were black, whereas African-Americans only comprise 32% of the state's population. With regard to unemployment numbers, despite making up less than 1/3 of Georgia's labor force, black workers account for more than half of recent unemployment insurance claims, a whopping 55% for the month of March. As these numbers illustrate, our minority communities are bearing the brunt of the COVID-19 crisis. Therefore, it only seems appropriate that the communities that are suffering the most should receive a priority share of the economic relief afforded by these grants. Additionally, I believe it is also the quickest and most efficient way to utilize minority businesses to deliver support for those over 55% unemployed African-Americans. Specifically, I'm asking that the MOU be updated to, one, encourage the Chamber of Commerce to establish a goal of awarding at least 15% of the grants to minority-owned businesses in Cobb. And, two, to encourage the Chamber of Commerce to establish a goal to subcontract at least 15% of its generous small business grant fund administration fee. To quickly explain the 15%, that is calculated by, according to a 2019 study by the SBA's Office of Advocacy, minority-owned businesses in Georgia account for over 15%, actually 17% of all Georgia small business employees. During this morning's work session, I heard Commissioner Ott state that he didn't agree with minority business goals because all Cobb firms have been impacted. With all due respect, I would just add that the data shows that minority businesses in the minority communities have been impacted to a much greater extent. This is what the data shows and what we should respond to. Finally, fighting COVID has been likened to fighting a war. I know that Chairman Boyce is a fan of the movie Patton, and like Patton, we need to throw overwhelming force at this enemy. And right now, this COVID enemy has a stronghold in the minority community. Now is a critical time for leadership and intentionality when it comes to ensuring that none of our communities are left further behind during this crisis. Since we are only as strong as our weakest link, let's take this opportunity to demonstrate just what Cobb strong truly means. Thank you.
Chairman, the next speaker is Leela Sidov.
Leela Sidov has not joined the call.
And the next one I had after that is Mark Sidov.
Mark Sidov has not joined the call.
Have any of the previous listed callers who were not available when we first started now available?
We have a call-in user. We're not sure who they are, though. Who's 404698? Okay, we have no other callers that have joined.
All right. Chairman, with that, that concludes the time for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to consent now. For those of you watching at home, the consent agenda is going to be scrolled on the screen in its entirety, and then we'll vote.
Consent item number seven, did you get that changed?
Yes. So that's going to revise.
It's already revised. We include the not to exceed number.
And for those who are watching at home, consent agenda number seven has been revised to a requirement not to exceed number, as requested by the Commissioners this morning. Okay, now I move to approve consent agenda as revised and to authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second discussion?
Yes, Chairman, discussion. In the public comment, there was a comment addressing settlement of a legal matter. I did not see that in my consent agenda. Is that on the agenda in another tab that I missed?
No, I didn't see it either, Commissioner.
I believe that was in our last meeting.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question on number eight. I believe I found the section you were referring to where it says, "New recipients provide stipends to employees for eligible expenses." Is that where you're referring to, that this is an eligible expense under the CARES funding?
Or elections, Commissioner?
Correct.
So, yes, ma'am, we were saying that funding additional poll workers or adding additional funding to entice people to come to work for our polls during the selection is an eligible expense of CARES Act funding.
Okay, well, the way the plan is written, it says an additional stipend. So I went back quickly and looked at all the documents that you have provided us about how the CARES funds can be spent, and the only thing that I found regarding a stipend was an example, a stipend to employees to improve telework capabilities. And it says here, it says expenditures paid with payments from the fund must be limited to those that are necessary due to the public health emergency. It then goes on to say, "As such, unless the government were to determine that providing assistance in the form of a stipend is an administrative necessity." So I'm not quite sure how, again, this can be covered as a stipend and that we're not going to be possibly audited and have to reimburse these funds for not being spent appropriately.
Okay. My understanding from the language under the elections section, which doesn't necessarily highlight the stipend component, basically says that money is available to help prepare for an election. And this is what we're asking, what Janine is asking, is for assistance in the preparation for an election. And that preparation is specifically, I need poll workers, because I'm struggling to get poll workers to work because of COVID-19. There's been a problem in the past, for the most part. So we're trying to use this as an enticement or an inducement to get more people to assist with this election, which is just a few weeks away. And my understanding is that this is an eligible expense because it is directly related to COVID-19.
Okay, so I guess I have not received, or I have not seen, where the COVID can be spent for the elections. So can you again once please send that to me?
The only thing I have is that the CARES Act allows for the preparation of an election. We are in the process of preparing for an election. Janine's request is I need poll workers in order to work the election. So in order for her to get poll workers, the amount of people that she needs, she's trying to say, perhaps if I offer a little bit more than what they would normally receive, perhaps I can entice them to be there. Otherwise, it's going to have an adverse impact on our elections process. So I don't know what else to give you. I have asked Bill Bowen to double-check to make sure, but from my understanding and communication with Holland Knight, this is exactly what the Secretary of State's office wants us to do, and that is to have a successful uninhibited process for elections. And if she doesn't have enough poll workers, it will have an adverse impact on our ability to have a successful election. Now, this is not just doling out money. This is to let people know we need help, and here's the new amount we're willing to pay. And this money is not, again, going to just be doled out. It's going to be, if she can get additional workers, it will help her through that process. And that is an eligible expense, as I understand it, of the CARES Act money in preparation for an election.
I have a comment to point you out.
One second. Commissioner Gabriel?
Commissioner Burrow, go ahead, because I'm pulling up an email from April 23rd from the county manager to see where I can find this again.
Commissioner Burrow?
I realize what Janine's going through. On the news last night, there are two counties in Georgia that had to close early voting. On the news last night, there are two counties in Georgia that had to close early voting because of workers contracting COVID-19. So it is impacting workers, and they had to close, they had to shut down early voting because they need a few days to sanitize and so those workers have to go into quarantine and they'll have to, you know, get new workers, poll workers in for the early voting. So I see the need for this and I support it.
In my opinion, as the county manager, even if this were an ineligible expense through CARES Act, we have the fiduciary responsibility to provide this county the best, most successful, most efficient election. This is a presidential election year. If we are going to get lambasted if we don't do everything we can to make sure that we provide our residents an opportunity to get out there and vote and try not to make it more cumbersome than it already is. I trust Janine as the elections director. Cobb has been hailed as one of the best counties to bench-hark against how this process works. So with all due respect, Chairman, Commissioners, I would be remiss in my job as county manager if I did not support this director who's saying, "I am struggling to get poll workers." And she's saying, "I need to try to figure out a way to get more people to step into a role." I appreciate your support, and Commissioner, I will continue to do research on this, but right now, she doesn't have a minute to waste because she has to advertise it, she's got to get out there, she's got to get these people trained to be ready for a election. So I would respectfully ask that the board move forward on it, and as we have done in the past, if there is an opportunity where we have to figure out where we're going to get the money, I say then that's what we do. We figure it out. This is one thing that I support wholeheartedly, without question, and if we don't do this, it's going to come back and harm us even more than what she's asking for.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I call a question. I move, I call a question. All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed? Commissioner Dambro, did you support that or oppose it? Commissioner Dambro?
Chairman, we were voting on the consent agenda.
Correct.
So, again, I disagree with the discussion that's happening on number eight.
Okay.
A lot of these things should have already been done by now. This is just, you know, I think it's setting us up, but I will support it in this vote, but I think it is setting us up for precedence down the road.
Okay, so noted, thank you. So the motion passes five to zero. I'm on your record. And the first one is, said agenda number fourteen, to approve the SLOP, County Cobb and Cobb County SLOP's renewal proposed project list for inclusion in the 2022 special purpose local, special purpose local option sales tax referendum. And so I'm going to, for a personal discussion, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion, ask for a second, and then we'll discuss it, okay? So that, I move to approve the Cobb County SLOP renewal proposed project list for inclusion in the 2022 special purpose local option sales tax referendum, enter government agreements with the municipalities, addition to the board of commissioners approval of referendum, and enter county governments at a subsequent meeting. You want your second?
Second.
We have a second, so for discussion. Commissioner Art?
Ms. Chairman, I just want to, you know, I talked about it this morning about swapping out that one request from the CID, and I just, I don't know if it was swapped out, or, I know Erica talked a little bit about it, and I just wanted to find out because I don't see any revisions to the list.
Is that, this, looking for Erica here on the screen.
Yes, sir.
Are you going to respond to Commissioner Art's question?
Yes, sir. So the list has all of the components listed. The file for the federal state local match was not attached, so we can add those, we can add that project on there. So the lists that he has are all of our named projects, and then we have the component for the federal state local match for the 25 million, but we did not have the attached potential candidate projects listed and attached to that list.
So I guess my question is, I understand that, and you said this morning it was on the federal matching list, but I guess my question is, and it's under DOT District, and it's about two-thirds way down, and it says Cumberland Parkway Safety Improvement. No, that's not it. But, so Erica, are you saying that we are going to add it to the list? Or where it's at, when you said it's on the federal matching list, does that allow it to be done? Because I thought the request was to swap out the corridor, the Cumberland Core project for the one I mentioned this morning.
Yes, so we can add that to our federal state local list.
Okay, but where is the other project? Was the other project on the federal list? I don't think it was.
I thought that one was listed on there also.
Yeah, I'm not finding it right now. I know we talked about it this morning. Bottom line, Ms. Chairman, is what I would like to be swapped, is what I talked about this morning, was swapping the Cumberland Corridor projects A and C for the improvements that we talked about this morning.
Okay, all right. We're going to go put that in the minutes that the county clerk will be doing, just to note that.
That's all I have.
Okay. Other questions?
Commissioner, excuse me, this is Bill Boeckel, I'm sorry, Commissioner Art, which one was it that you wanted to have taken out then?
Bill.
On what page? Which one did you have taken out?
I'm trying to find. And that's what I was asking Erica, is it on the federal matching list that we don't have in front of us? Or if you could point us to where it is on the list. I just know it's a project that was on there, CID brought to my attention.
Erica, do you have your matching funds, 25 million dollar list broken down? She's pulling it up, sir.
Okay.
The name projects we have for District Two are Post Oak and Holly Springs, which is a joint project, Cumberland Parkway, which is Paces Log to Paces Sisbury, and then Church Road at Plinac. That one was on the federal state local list, so we'll make sure that we get Cumberland Corlet named on there.
Okay, so the swap, what we're talking about swapping is on the federal matching list. Okay, all right, that's all I wanted to make sure.
Commissioner Burrow?
Yes, the comments this morning about Buckner and Oakdale, is that city limits of Smyrna? Is that Commissioner Art's district of Smyrna City?
Right kind of along the line with Commissioner Cupid.
That's what I was thinking, two and four.
Right, because, um...
But is it city limits of Smyrna? I know Oakdale Road is.
Yeah, I don't think it is in the city limits.
We'll double-check, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Would that be an option for intersection improvements? Or how could that be addressed?
Thank you for your point.
Erica?
Yes, ma'am, so we have talked about adding that to our federal state local list also. That one is, the city limits line is kind of in and out along Oakdale Road, so we could place that. However, you know, they would have to be the partner for that project because we, you know, we don't have the funds to have it as a named project on this list, so we would have to have a partner. And then with the funding amount, no, it's just got to be, we're going to be careful for which projects are selected along that time period for that SLOP. But yes, we could add that as a main project in that federal state local consideration to be selected as a project we may vote with.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Cupid, any other questions?
No questions. I appreciated the discussion we had earlier today on this list. Just to, I want to recognize some of the comments that we received from the public as we acknowledged during today's public comment portion of this meeting. In the midst of us having public discussions, we were hit with the COVID epidemic, which did limit our ability to continue with the public meetings, to have people weigh in on the SLOPs. For me, I took into consideration ongoing requests received throughout the year, some of the staff projects which were not included on their lists, some things that weren't funded adequately in the past 2016 list, and in response to not having the continued public meetings, I put out an email asking people for their feedback, and so I was able to include some of those things. I have not had the opportunity to respond to everyone. Some people may look at the list and not see projects reflected. I do know some of those projects will be addressed in this current SLOP for some of the broader categories, and I look forward to following up with you on that. However, there are some projects that will not be on this list just due to the limited nature of this SLOP. It's been recognized that this SLOP emphasizes road surfacing improvement, and that's where a lot of this funding is going, and it's reflected in the number of, in the number of emails and calls that the county receives with respect to road quality. So you're going to see that reflected in this SLOP. It has posed challenges for all of us with respect to community impact projects, also with respect to staff projects, but it was the overwhelming interest of the majority of the board to have this be a SLOP that allowed us to address the recurring requests for road improvements. I'm hoping that the conservative estimate of our SLOP income will not come to pass and that we will have more funds that will allow us to address some of these things that were not addressed. But right now, you know, not only because this is road surfacing heavy, but because we've had to apply a conservative approach to the SLOP, we've also cut funding from a lot of projects. But we're hoping that if we address some of the projects that are in the SLOP, particularly with respect to road resurfacing, that we will catch up. So six years from now, our roads aren't in worse shape than what they are in. I've gotten some inquiry with respect to why there's lack of specificity with some of the park projects in District Four, and I did that in reflection of this ongoing SLOP and realizing, in a six-year span, the needs of a community and the interest of the community can change, and at least providing a broad category for those parks will allow the community to provide impact to parks, as Parks has done a phenomenal job in weighing community input in some of the 2016 SLOP projects. I think it's also fair to whoever's coming in into this chair to be able to have the flexibility to respond to constituents for their requests for some of those projects. So again, I think what we have moving forward, at least for District Four, allows us to be responsive. Certainly, this does not allow us to be responsive to every request. I certainly wish things were different, that we were in the midst of a pandemic, that we didn't have to cut as much as we did. I certainly wish our roads were in better condition so that we could do more things that come out the ground, but I have to accept the reality of what is on the table and still do what I can to help move the county along. And I'm hoping that you can have some understanding for this position that we're in as a board. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any other comments on the board?
Chairman, I would just like to reiterate what I stated this morning about the fact that we are not funding the sheriff's office to the needs that they have for their capital improvements. That should be on the SLOP list, and the fact that we're going to now need to fund it through our general fund budget.
Okay, thank you very much for that comment. Any other comments or questions? With that, I call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. And it passes five to zero. Thank you, Commissioners, for all your hard work and your comments. I repeat that sincerely. Thank you. Okay, let's go on to Agenda Item Number Fifteen, and I'll again read the motion and ask for a second, and then we'll have discussion on, all right? I made the motion that we approved the initial categories for the funding received under the CARES Act through the Coronavirus Relief Fund. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All right, I'll open the floor to questions, comments. Don't be shy. We had a good discussion this morning, and you still have some comments. Come on now. First, Commissioner Cupid, go. There you go, thank you.
I'll go first, and again, I recognize that this is our first step to recognizing the different federal categories of which we will be putting our efforts towards in response to COVID-19. I do believe that there'll be other categories added as we weigh ongoing requests. I would just ask for the board to consider our coming together, whether it be electronically, whether it be via email or in person, but we've really got to hash out how much we're going to spend in each category so that we can be mindful of additional projects that come before us. And when we do that, I think it's important that we clarify how these federal buckets relate to county activity, so it's more clear, because I had to go back and forth to figure out what aligns with what and still have some outstanding questions. But I'm going to support this because it's a first step for us recognizing that there are going to be multiple buckets for federal funding that will be applying project requests to.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, and I want to assure you that I hear you loud and clear, and I will work great, hard to quickly bring together a forum of the Commissioners to help start that discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman.
Any other comments from the board? Okay, seeing none, I call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. I see, I see five hands, I believe, or four hands, so it passes five to zero. Thank you very much, Commissioners, I appreciate that. All right, we'll go on to number sixteen. Commissioner Art, leave this to the...
Ms. Chairman, you know, this morning we had a very spirited discussion about the item number sixteen. I do have Dana Johnson on this meeting if the Commissioners would like to ask any follow-on questions from this morning. If you'd like, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Sixteen, to approve emergency funding for a small business grant program to be used by locally owned and operated small businesses with less than 100 employees adversely affected by COVID-19 to improve unemployment numbers by providing cash grants subject to certain conditions and authorize the chairman to execute the memorandum of understanding and any other necessary documents for said purpose. And that MOU has been updated since our meeting this morning. That's the motion.
Our second is revised.
And Ms. Chairman, like I said, Dana Johnson from the chamber is on the meeting if people have questions of him.
Just some quick questions as I was looking through the revised document. We've got some typo errors in there that need to be cleaned up.
Is Debbie Blair on the meeting? Or Bill, are you here, not Debbie?
Yeah, both of us are here.
All right, Commissioner Dambro, why don't you just mention to Debbie Blair and make those corrections?
On the second page, when it says, "The following are the requirements for all small businesses," it says business headquarters or, the words run together. And just as a general comment, I thought we were going to get rid of headquarters.
No, what we talked about was regional offices, that was the special. Issue was about regional offices.
Okay, I thought it was both, but headquarters and the word or is run together right there.
I'll correct that. It was, I haven't tracked change, so I haven't printed it, I haven't accepted the changes yet. I'll correct that. I haven't tracked change, so I haven't printed it. I haven't accepted the changes yet.
Okay. And that was the only one that I saw that ran together real quick.
Okay, any other comments from the Board?
Yes, I had one typo that I found too in the original document. The last paragraph on Page Three of the document before funding, it says for a period of seven years. I think that should be of seven years.
Yes. We'll make that change.
Okay, comments?
Yes, Chairman.
Commissioner.
I would like the Board to, I'm sorry, is it for me to speak?
Yeah, Commissioner Cupid.
Okay, thank you. I would like for us to consider responding to some of the comments made and adding some additional clauses to the revised MOU. One of the comments that we discussed this morning that was not included was was a statement stating that a recipient does not need to be a Cobb Chamber business or does not need to be a member of the Cobb Chamber. I think it's important that that's included in this document. Reception issue that we have with WFN, and just making it clear that we want to make this as open a process as possible.
And I think the Board would agree to that, Commissioner Cupid?
There was a statement also made which piggybacks on this, that no preferential treatment would be given to members of the Cobb Chamber. So just one clause says, membership in the Cobb Chamber is not required, nor will there be preferential treatment for any Cobb Chamber member.
And I think that's fine to be added.
Okay, we're good?
Okay.
Commissioner Earl, you have a question, Commissioner Earl?
No, I was saying Dana was saying.
All right. Now, Commissioner Cupid, go ahead, please.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. I didn't hear.
Commissioner Allen was okay with that change, so we're reaccepted.
Okay. And then there was some discussion this morning with respect to minority businesses. And I spoke ahead because the request was not made to make that a requirement, but to state that it's a goal. And I do remember that being reflected in our Braves documents, that we had a goal of including a certain number of DBEs. And wanted to know if the Board would be okay with adding a provision for there to be a goal of 15% awards to minority businesses in Cobb.
Let's have a discussion about that.
And Ms. Chairman, as I mentioned this morning, I don't support that.
Other comments?
I cannot support that either.
Okay. I'm just looking at what Mr. Richardson said. He asked us to consider wording that if we use language to encourage the Board or the Commission to pursue certain distribution goals. So I think that he offered us a way forward on that, Commissioner Cupid?
Yeah, and it doesn't, I remember following this with our Braves document, and it was listed as a goal. And at the very least, it enabled us to track it. And there were some conscientious efforts to track it. We tracked this not only for minority businesses, but for women-owned businesses and veterans-owned businesses. And as we tracked it, goals were ultimately surpassed in those categories without it necessarily being a requirement. That could happen here, and I think it sends a message to the community about recognizing that disparate impact that was communicated today without obligating the Board to do so. So I just think in practicality, it could result in that being tracked.
Yeah, I think that reflects also well on the county, that when we have a goal that's aspirational, but it's certainly meaningful, it reflects the world we live in, that that's always something that we should consider seriously. So I kind of like Mr. Richardson's proposal, to include language in there to encourage the Board or the Commission to pursue, you know, a certain goals for distribution, whatever, whatever is the intent of. What do you think, Commissioner Cupid?
I'm supportive, and I think it aligns with the Chamber's interests. Also, they have a Diversity and Inclusion Council that's trying to look at how minorities participate in economic development activity of the county. I don't think it runs in contrast to the goals of that organization. And when you look at it, you look at 15% minority business participation, but you can also look at the other side. You're talking about 85% otherwise. You know, those numbers are certainly, they're distinct from one another. So I personally, I can understand it. These numbers, to me, I don't think reflect the disparate impact to minority communities, but at least gives us a way to acknowledge it.
Any other members like to weigh in on this?
And Ms. Chairman, I want to comment on that.
I'm sorry?
Here's my concern. We've spent considerable amount of time, starting with the discussion on the food issue, about being exact and determining how stuff is given out. To say that we encourage and then include 15%, we're drawing a really fuzzy line because are we going to not vote on it because it isn't 15% while we only encourage them? Well, if we're encouraging them, why are we putting 15% in? I just think that, as I mentioned before, I think all businesses are being hurt, and I think it just needs to be left the way it is.
Okay, other comments? Commissioner Earl?
Yes, I agree with Mr. Allen as far as this needs to be across the board for all businesses to apply. So I think the better way to do this is encourage businesses to apply and go through the process like all the other businesses that are being affected. And I don't know the system that Select Cobb has developed, but there's already a lot of requirements in the package that we're going to have to meet. And I think we need to make it fair across the board to all businesses within, you know, the less than 100 and less than 50 and meet all the requirements.
Let's have Dana Johnson weigh in on this.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Dana Johnson here, Select Cobb and Cobb Chamber. Thank you so much to all of you for considering this request. We think it will be a phenomenal opportunity to really help small businesses in Cobb County. We will end up managing this in the way that the Board of Commissioners approves it. One compromise position might be to incorporate information on race, gender, and veteran status as part of the application so we can at least track it, so we have an understanding of the applicants and those approved. That would probably just be for tracking purposes. And that might be a compromise position that we might be able to create where it does not create a distinct threshold, but at least we're able to analyze the results of the work that we've done.
What do you think, Mr. Cupid?
I think it's fair to have it reported because you certainly can't measure what's not tracked. And, you know, outside of it being in the agreement, it at least gives us opportunity to follow it. You know, again, I trust that with the efforts that the Chamber has to be mindful of minority inclusion, that I don't think this will be an infeasible goal. And so, thank you, Dana. I think that is a good way to compromise in allowing that data to be incorporated in this.
Okay, and I think this discussion brings that issue out in an open where it needs to be seen, that we know, you know, we're certainly closer to where we need to be, but we're not there yet. And I think that what Dana's proposed here is a good way to, first of all, track it, and second of all, a reminder that we need to keep this journey going.
Yes.
Okay, so.
Include veterans.
Right, include the veterans, correct.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this Agenda Item?
Yes, I just want to again thank the Board and you, Chairman, for considering the conversation earlier today in this revised MOU. And just want to emphasize to the businesses that I spoke to that it does include home-based businesses.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? Hearing none, I now call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. I see five hands. It passes five to zero. Thank you so much, Commissioners. This is really a big step forward to address the needs here in the county, particularly in the business community. Commissioner Allen, I'll leave you with Seventeen.
Chair. Okay, thank you, Ms. Chairman. Number Seventeen, as we talked earlier, is to approve emergency funding to provide rent relief for low-income families. And I have Margie Stagmeyer on the line to answer questions that might have come up from this morning that we didn't answer. So with that, I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number Seventeen, to approve emergency funding to provide rent relief for low-income families living in qualified apartment communities in Cobb County adversely affected by COVID-19, and to authorize the Chairman to execute the Memorandum of Understanding and any other necessary documents for said purpose.
I have a second discussion from the Board.
Margie is on the line if you'd like to ask her directly.
Yes, Chairman, there is discussion. Margie, this is Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. We received correspondence today that provides that your nonprofit is based out of Atlanta. Can you provide some clarification on where it is actually based out of?
We're actually in Marietta, off of Highway Five in Office Park. Been there since 1996.
Okay, that's your physical location. Is there another business address for your nonprofit?
That is the business address.
It is? Okay, so there's no location that's on Peachtree Street?
Yeah, we have, well, we have a location on Peachtree, and we have sites basically in the city of Atlanta and in Marietta.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. As I shared earlier, the call, this is just for public consumption or the Board's consumption, is just some challenges with how we've arrived to selecting the organization to address housing stability, or excuse me, housing stabilization and emergency housing. We have a number of players in this space in Cobb County, and that includes Ms. Stagmeyer. But the way we're approaching this is in significant contrast to how we approached the food distribution funding. We actually had a presentation that was provided and supported by various nonprofits that helped to weigh in on that presentation provided to Commissioners. We had a significant amount of correspondence between multiple nonprofits to the county, which resulted in us modifying our approach to reflect the way that it could help the nonprofits that are in this space. We also ended up creating a program that allowed the funding to go to every nonprofit organization that was distributing food in response to COVID that met the base requirements. We also waited for this discussion for two weeks to allow this to be fleshed out, to make sure that there would be equity in this process and also accountability. I believe that in creating a MOU in this manner, without opening it up to other nonprofits to be able to afford a MOU, is not, is not in good faith to all of the other organizations that have been working in partnership with the county in this space. I also feel like there are some issues with equity, as was communicated by a speaker on this call today, with not only looking at apartment housing, but also looking at tenants and single-family homes. As we have a number of homes where both landlord and tenant could be assisted through having access of funding to help with the, to help persons who are not paying their rent regularly. Come together and get more feedback and talk with our nonprofit community that's in this space, that have opportunity to not only recognize Ms. Stagmeyer's work, but other players in this space, and to also recognize the broad landlord-tenant community that exists in Cobb County beyond this. So as much as I want to see money going towards housing stabilization or emergency housing, I am very concerned about this, what we're doing today, and how it sets a precedent for individual organizations to piggyback on particular relationships that they have with a Board member to get a MOU in front of us without the Board discussing a very large and significant issue that will be with us for years to come as people will be reeling with the impacts of COVID-19 and their ability to pay for rent. So I support the work that Star C does. I support us, again, trying to address housing stabilization. I can't support the manner in which this is being done.
Okay. Are you, a response from me?
I think we're just waiting on questions.
The comments were for the whole Board and public, just to know my position. It's not for your response, but thank you.
And I hear your concerns, Commissioner Cupid. I just want you to know that by the fact that we approved the categories here just, you know, a few moments ago, other organizations can now submit their proposals to us. But I hear what you're saying, that we need to have a work session or, you know, a work session to discuss how much to go eat in the buckets. But I fully expect that other organizations like Ms. Stagmeyer's are going to submit proposals to us under the CARES legislation, once we decide how much money to put in each of the buckets. So it's a perfect process, but I think it's important to emphasize, this is not exclusive. In other words, if we approve this Agenda Item, that does not mean that that's the only funding that's going to go in that bucket. That issue has yet to be decided until we have the work session and we agree how much to put in each of the buckets.
Then my compromise measure would be this, Chairman. And to support this, I would ask that we have some type of messaging that goes out to those organizations within our county that would like to apply for those funds and deem themselves a partner, so that they know they have this option available to them. And if we're going to consider those beyond this funding, I can support it. I'll, recognizing too that there are other classes of the landlord-tenant relationship that will need to address, whether it's single-family homes, as even ours was recognized today, which is a pseudo landlord-tenant relationship, but we have people living in, you know, extended stay, and what does that look like, you know? At the end of the day, they're trying to keep roofs over people's heads.
And I'm fine with that. And I can assure you, that's exactly what's going to happen, is that if we pass this Agenda Item today, we'll make an effort, we will not make an effort, but we will start a messaging program to similar programs that are in this category, let them know that if we pass it today, that is just the first of future ones based on what the Board decides that goes into the funding for those buckets. Encourage them to apply, because we know, you and I both know, we can think of probably three or four others that are like Ms. Stagmeyer, that would be highly qualified for this funding to support the needs that are out there. And I'm certainly behind you on this effort.
Yes, you know, I'm supportive, but I just want to show the contrast. We had $1 million in food stabilization that's going to multiple nonprofits. Here we're going $1 million, over $1 million, to one organization that's in the nonprofit space with respect to this. So I don't know the path moving forward. We just put 38% of our dollars towards small businesses. Again, housing is going to be a costly, significant element of this. I just hope that we will have an open mind to make sure that our funding is equitable to other nonprofits. And I also, I see you nodding.
I agree with you. And I can assure you, if there's any issue about this, it's on my shoulders. I think, as I explained to the Board last week, I could have done this in another way, where we could have simply passed the categories today, and then we would have waited two more weeks to address issues like yours. And, you know, it's caught you in a rock and a hard place. There are urgency requirements out there, but there's also a need to address the equity issue that you always emphasize. So I just made the decision to go this route, but I see your need, that we need to ensure other nonprofits that are out there, that they should not read any action today if we approve this Agenda, that we're a one-and-done. We will encourage others to apply because we realize the needs are out there, and we certainly want to address them as many as we can with the resources that we're providing.
Thank you, Chairman. And for me, if I can just have the clerks just add a note that we will have an effort to communicate to other organizations that they can propose programming under our CARES Act. And I just say organizations and not nonprofit, because we've had cities, we've had schools, we've had another business-oriented nonprofit ask for funding. I mean, we have so many different categories of people that could help us. I just want them to all feel like we are as open to their, to their proposals as we are to any other organization.
And I'm sure that will be noted and put in the rec, in the minutes for you, Commissioner Cupid.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Otte.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I just, I want to, I mean, I understand what Commissioner Cupid's saying, and I think that part of what missed here is previous discussion by the board talked about people in apartments, and we also talked about people on extended stay. And then in the discussion of this proposal, some other areas of concern came up. But this, this proposal is not meant to exclude any of those other potential housing issues. What's being proposed here is what Star C does. And it addresses one of the areas of concern that other board members had said was a concern. Star C does not have a program to necessarily address all of those other issues. So I kind of view this as kind of almost a roadmap. If there's another organization out there that addresses maybe what we talked about, where you have landlords with houses that are being rented, and those people are having trouble, we'll let them bring it forward. But this proposal was only, it was geared towards what is being proposed, you know, apartments, and that's how the program is set up to work. And so I, I don't think it was ever meant to exclude anything else. It's just, this is how this particular program works.
I understand. I just feel like no other organization felt that they could move forward in this realm, or plenty of others did not know that they could move forward in this manner and would not have known unless they had a relationship with someone on this board that made them feel comfortable doing this. I also want to inter, you know, and I'm getting conflicted. I'm just, we all just got a message, and we're seeing that for Star C, that their 990 has that their address is on Peachtree Street in Atlanta. And there was a lot of discussion about whether or not we would keep these funds within our organizations in Cobb. So if Margie's still on the line, I need to understand how you're communicating that this is a Cobb business, and your 990 form states that your business is on Peachtree Street in Atlanta.
Okay, because that's one of our offices. We've got an office on 1335 Canton, where all our administration is done in Canton, but we have our board offices actually on Peachtree Street. We also have offices in the city of Atlanta that do programs, and we've got one in DeKalb County that does programs.
I would think that the place where you have your home office is the one that you're going to put on a 990 form, unless you have other 990 forms for all those different operations.
Well, I mean, we can easily put Cobb County on our 990.
But there's a reason you didn't, right? So I'm trying to figure out, are you being straight up with us that your home office is in Cobb? Or is it what you put on your 990 form?
Our office is in Cobb, where we do our administration.
Okay, I find that to be, I find that to be a little disingenuous. And I'm not saying that I can't support this, but I find that to be a bit disingenuous. You know, with the MOU that we just had for Cobb, there was discussion about a business having their license in Cobb or being headquartered in Cobb, their primary location in Cobb. And here, we're getting ready to put $1.5 million in an organization on a national document that gives the public the ability to, to look at its finances and the IRS, the ability to weigh its finances, is referring to an address outside of Cobb County. And it's just, the response is, well, we could just as easily put Cobb County. So I, I find that to be problematic.
Ms. Chairman, I would like to, just to make one comment, and we all got the same email from the person that sent it. And I have, I find it very disheartening to hear that this board is trying to challenge Margie Stagmeyer and say that she's lying to us, just because someone who has no association with the organization is trying to tell us that she's lying. I have, I find that very disheartening.
I think, I think that this boils down to Cobb County organizations feeling slighted and not being openly considered for such opportunities.
All right, look, if anyone's to take the blame for this, look at me, all right? Look at me. I'm the one, I'm the one that, that created this problem because of the way I brought this forward. But again, I go back to the fact that we can sit here all day and decide who does love to who, but we're missing that the focus should be on the people who need the rent assistance. And that's why, this may not be the most perfect one. It could have been some other one that came forward, you know, but it wasn't. It is what it is. And I know that when this is over, I personally am going to be calling several organizations in the county saying, please don't construe this as a one-and-done. The door is now open for you to apply, to do a program that fits the category, and I encourage you to do that post haste. So, you know, let's not, let's not sit here and throw arrows at each other. I'm going to send an email too, and I was disappointed in the context of that email. She's got a point, but we're all forgetting about, we're trying to serve the public here. Have somebody right here that can do it, that is going to do it in Cobb County. I think that's the part that we should be focusing on, and not where they live and where they buy their hamburgers, right?
I, I, I hear you, Chairman, but we have a lot of, we've had a lot of discussion on the last process that impacted a lot of organizations. And our goal was to be, at least be open and have open discussion. And I think when you're open, it allows things like this to be put on the table, so at least people walk away feeling like we're being fair and equitable. And it's not just about the, I've learned sitting on this floor, it's not just about the what, it's the how. And it seems like we just keep passing over the how and going to the what, and then we end up marring the public trust. We have a lot of organizations that have been a partner with Cobb County, and the goal is if we move forward to the ultimate end goal, if we mar that public trust, it takes us longer to recover from that and any other positive thing that we do following from this point. And I, I hear you, I hear you, but what you're saying still doesn't get our stakeholders who've been sacrificing in this county, providing for our, for our organizations in need, helping with housing every day. It's still not going to repair the broken trust that they're going to hang up in how this moves forward.
Well, I do know that Margie Stagmeyer and her organization have a huge impact on after-school programs in Cobb County. So say that they don't have a, they don't have a foothold in the county. I, I think, I think we all know better than that. They do. But again, it's not a perfect solution, but in this time, when we have to find, you know, strike a balance between the need and how we get there, it's always, you know, given the circumstances, it's never going to be perfect, but we're going to, we're going to work toward perfection by doing this work session that you asked for, that I'm sure you were going to have it, and we're going to have it in the future, and also send out the message that this is not exclusive. Anything into this is because somebody, you know, who's going to be approved today, if we approve it, does not mean that that's the way forward in the future. It just happened to be a circumstance where they came forward with a proposal, as did the chamber, and we need to move with categories. We can now open this, open this, this, gain to more resources, but slow it down until we have the work session to settle this issue about how much money and how we're going to allocate the resources, okay?
I appreciate that, and I don't want to communicate that we don't support other organizations in Cobb. That's not what I want to do, because I would have thought it would have been fair, looking at the other matter, for us to have supported the Atlanta Community Food Bank in conjunction with Cobb. So I, I don't want to have that be the perception. Issue is just, again, our internal organizations not feeling as if they had this opportunity presented to them. So I'm weighing all of this as I decide how I'm going to vote, Chairman. I know at the end of the day, this is going to help a lot of people in Cobb. I get very uncomfortable in us overlooking some of these things when it comes to, again, that the spirit or the spirit and treatment of some of our organizations here. And I've got to weigh this as we, you know, draw this to a vote.
Okay, I hear your comments. Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I now call the question. All in favor, please raise your hand. I see, I see three, I see three hands.
There's still comments?
I call the question. So I see three hands in support.
Commissioner Gamble is speaking. I don't know why we can't hear her.
Oh, is she?
Yeah, at least I look.
Yes, I was, I was trying to make a comment when you.
The technology didn't work for me this time, so please leave your comment, please.
I, I understand. There's always a delay. I understand. I guess, you know, listening to this and then seeing this email that we all just received, I think is a big indicator of why this board stopped funding nonprofits last year in the budget. Cobb County has over 400 nonprofits in Cobb County that serve Cobb County people. There's no way we have enough money to give each of those $1 million, if the $1 million from the food allocation is now the benchmark. I think it's a very sad day that this is happening, and this discussion is occurring. And I'm going to stand with my position that I do not believe the county should be using taxpayer dollars to fund nonprofits.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Chairman, I just want to respond that we just passed a $50 million line item for a nonprofit. The chamber is a nonprofit organization that will be a pass-through getting $500,000 of Cobb County money as a nonprofit. So I, I have a strong concern about all of a sudden there being support for taxpayer dollars, even though they may not be local taxpayer dollars, to go towards our business community and not know a 501(c)(3) is still a corporation, and they are providing a value to our county, and to think that they should not receive funding. I think it's in contrast, stark contrast to what we just did, where there will be winners and losers too. Even if it's $50 million, I'm pretty sure all of the businesses that have not received PPP funding may not necessarily be awarded. So I, I hear what you're saying, but I know as a board, we are looking at the impact that COVID is having on our institutions, on our organizations, that prop Cobb County up as what it is, and saying we need to do something about it, that Cobb County is a partner with all of these organizations, and that includes our nonprofit community.
Okay, thank you. And as usual, as always, I always respect the opinion of each Commissioner and believe that they have the right to make their positions known. So with that, any other issues or questions? Commissioner Gamble.
Mr. Chairman, in response to that, there's a big difference between the finally approved.
Go ahead. Whoops, I lost you. There you are. I lost you for ten, Commissioner Gamble. You're going to go ahead.
Excuse me, we have a, you've called the question. We're still having discussion. I've already, yes, I have to plead.
All right, but Commissioner.
I've already voted yes.
All right, but because of time, I didn't see Commissioner Gamble, and I'm letting her finish her comments. Go ahead, Commissioner Gamble.
Okay, there's a difference between funding for our small businesses, because our small businesses are going to enable people to not be reliant on government. These other nonprofits are, can continue to have people reliant on government. Need to have people be self-sufficient.
Again, I just respectfully disagree. A lot of our nonprofits help people to be able to get on their own two feet to be able to not have to depend on government.
Okay, I think we've all made our positions real well-known. And so the questions called, I have Commissioner Burrow saying yes, Commissioner Otte saying yes, and I'm still, I'm voting yes. And I believe I hear a canine voting yes. Commissioner Cupid, how do you vote?
Chairman, I'm going to, I'm going to vote reluctantly yes. I know it's going to help people. I'm just asking for your help and partnership in ensuring that other organizations have the capacity to be able to move forward in a similar manner.
And you have my commitment. Commissioner Gamble.
I do not support this agenda item.
Okay, so it passes 41 with Commissioner Gamble in opposition. So thank you, Commissioners. All right, now on to transportation. Ms. Parrish? And Erica, you need to be really close to your microphone. We can barely hear you.
Sorry. Yes, sir. Can you hear me better?
You're not small with the microphone.
Our first item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Number One to the Subgrant Agreement with the Atlanta Regional Commission in an amount not to exceed $500,000 for the County Conference of Transportation Plan Assistance Program, funding for continued development of a five-year update to the Cobb County Conference of Transportation Plan 2050, and approve an agreement time extension through December 31st of 2021.
Okay, so moved.
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, support, raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number Two to the Consultant Services Agreement with Emily Horn and Associates in an amount not to exceed $500,000 to continue development of an update to the Cobb County 2050 Conference of Transportation Plan.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, raise your hand. Passes five to zero. Thank you.
Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number Two Final to the Contract with Masana Construction Inc., savings to the project in the amount of $145,741.55 for bridge rehabilitation on Windy Hill Road over Rottenwood Creek.
Commissioner Otte.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the question, raise your hand. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Supplemental Agreement Number One to the Project Number X2743-TO Number Two to the 2015 Master Task Order Contract with HNTP Corporation for Engineering Design of Ebenezer Rim Sidewalks, and approve that contract and time extension through June 30th of 2021.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
You have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Change Order Number Three Final with CMES, savings to the project in the amount of $1,563,012.10 for thoroughfare improvements on Windy Hill Road East, Windy Hill Road West, and then Windy Hill Road at Powersbury Road.
Commissioner Otte.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve Amendment Number One to the Cobb Framework Agreement with the City of Pennesaw for Intersectioning from Collins Berkeley at Ben King Road.
Commissioner Burrow.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. And our last item is requesting that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with the, oh, this is our next to last item, I'm sorry. The Board of Commissioners approve a contract with NH Construction Company Inc. in an amount not to exceed $465,631.75 for drainage system improvement off Mountain Lane.
Commissioner Gamble.
So moved. Second.
Have a second. Any discussion? Call the question? Passes five to zero.
Okay, and our last item is the request for the Board of Commissioners to approve Supplemental Agreement Number Two to the Contract with Detection Engineering Technology E in an amount not to exceed $55,000 for flash and yellow arrow signal upgrades, and approve a contract time extension through July 31st, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the question? I see three hands. I'm for. Any opposition? We have, are you, are you for it or against it, Commissioner Gamble? I can't tell. Commissioner Gamble?
Cutting in and out, but I support this.
Okay, all right, fine, thank you. Passes five to zero. Thank you, Erica. Information Services?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Our first item this afternoon is a request to authorize the purchasing director to purchase networking equipment greater than $100,000 under provisions of the Georgia Department Administrative Services Contract for Networking Equipment and IT Infrastructure Products 99999-SPD-T201-20501-0006 with Process Information Systems, Inc. On August 30th, 2018, the Board of Commissioners acquired the LG Community Credit. On August 30th, 2018, the Board of Commissioners acquired the LGE Community Credit Union property located at 430 Commerce Park Drive Southeast to be used as a new Cobb County Police Department headquarters. This agenda item is to purchase networking equipment and technology infrastructure for the new police headquarters. This purchase is an eligible project under the 2016 SPOS Business Technology Transformation, which includes networking equipment and technology infrastructure. We request the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchasing director to purchase networking equipment for the new CCPD headquarters in an amount not to exceed $111,612.59 under provisions of the Georgia Department Administrative Services Contract for Networking Equipment and IT Infrastructure Products 999-99-SPD-T201-20501-0006 with Process Information Systems, Inc., and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
Commissioner Ott.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Call the question? Commissioner Gamble, I, I can't see your hand. Okay, fine, thank you. Passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Our second item this afternoon is a request from the Board of Commissioners to approve a sole-source contract with Astro Integrated Systems of Georgia for the installation of the county's Enterprise Access Control System for the basement detention doors in 12 East Park Square. The current renovation of the Senate's Enforcement Unit in the basement includes two detention doors to separate the inmate holding cell area from the Senate's Enforcement Unit office. These two doors require specialized hardware and software. This is an approved project under the 2016 SPOS Project Support Services Facilities Improvements Program X0920. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a sole-source contract with Astro Integrated Systems of Georgia in an amount not to exceed $69,801.81 for the installation of the county's Enterprise Access Control System for the basement detention doors in 12 East Park Square, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Ott.
So moved.
Second. Second.
Call the question? Passes five to zero. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I have a couple of appointments to announce. Uh, I want to announce the appointment of Bernadette Amorain to the Workforce Development Board for a term to expire on June 30th, uh, 2022, and she replaces Valerie Carter, and our, our thanks to Valerie, uh, Ms. Carter for her, for her work to this board. The second one is to announce the appointment of James Holmes of the Kennesaw Hospital Authority. Uh, he'll fill post five for a five-year term to expire on May 23rd, 2025, and, uh, he will be filling a vacancy. So that, I'll start. Commissioner comments. Commissioner Burrow, you're first today.
Oh, good. Um, I think I have some video that I need to see 'cause I don't have my announcements in front of me. Uh, mainly it's, uh, the election coming up, June 9th, with, uh, the early voting locations starting next week. We'll be adding, um, to the main office, uh, four locations and, um, starting next week, and then, um, Election Day, June 9th, also absentee voting. You can send in your absentee ballots, and you can, um, utilize the drop boxes for those as well. And there are four locations where the drop boxes will be also. And early voting will start next week at other locations. And also, email Cobb Elections if you'd like to be a poll worker and go through the training process. I know Janine's still looking for some. So thank you very much, and subscribe to our newsletters for more information. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Um, thank everyone for weighing in on this meeting, and I'd like to thank those, uh, the small business community for reaching out to me in contemplation of some of the matters that have been heard today. I did have a couple of slides. I don't know if they're gonna come up, but I will address one that I will have go out in, um, communications, I guess, today or tomorrow, that there will be, um, free COVID testing that, um, State Representative Erica Thomas is doing in conjunction with Destiny Royal Church, and that'll be this Friday, which coincidentally is my birthday. So, um, the members of, um, the community to know that there is another site that will be made available on that day. Oh, thank you. Appreciate that, Ross. I see it coming up, and it'll be Friday from 1:00 to 4:30 p.m. Also, um, tomorrow, in, um, the spirit of everything, um, moving to computers and video conferencing, we will be holding our first community zoning meeting, um, virtually tomorrow at 6 o'clock p.m. I was able to hastily move, um, with, uh, Information Systems. I really appreciate their assistance to, um, have this meeting tomorrow. So those of you who are used to coming to the South Cobb Community Center and having these discussions on the next month's zoning cases, again, that will occur tomorrow at 6 o'clock p.m., same bat time, but not the same bat place. You can do this out of your home, and please go to my newsletter, uh, which should have been sent to you today. We'll have a link for you to sign up. If for some reason you're not signed up on my newsletter, please email me. We will get you that information. And if for some reason you're watching this and don't have access to the computer, you could call my office at 770-528-3311, and we will get you signed up for the meeting so that we can get your feedback on the next month's zoning cases. Lastly, um, you know, at the end of the day, Cobb County is in a very favorable position to have received CARES money to be able to respond to COVID. This is not funding that was awarded to all counties, but counties that had populations over 500,000. And this is not an easy task, um, but it is one that we certainly are in a favorable position compared to some of our partner counties, um, to be able to have this to be responsive. My goal is to make sure that we can be responsive to as many needs and to all that are hoping to address those needs as possible. And so I appreciate the Chairman and being willing to reach out to our nonprofits, or not to our nonprofits, to all of our organizations that see themselves partnering with Cobb County in addressing our response to COVID, because we still have a lot of work to do to address, um, other outstanding matters with COVID-19. I just want to, uh, make a very brief comment with respect to, um, nonprofit organizations and dependency on the government. You know, uh, with the measure that we passed with the chamber, we, um, stated that we will track, um, participation of women-owned businesses, minority-owned businesses, and veterans-owned businesses. I'm just curious to know if our nonprofits are tracking who works, who was employed and is still dependent on government assistance. There are a lot of people doing the best that they can, still are not making a living wage to be able to, um, provide for their, um, families with their roof over their head, with clothing, with food, and other essential, um, needs without additional assistance. And we're fortunate that we have organizations that help people, um, to be in a position to be able to better do so, and hopefully to be able to better themselves in the process to get in a better position. But this is becoming more and more daunting for us in Cobb. Our new homes are being built at $300,000, and this is a, a home value that even my husband and I, graduating from Georgia Tech, we could have afforded it, but it's not something that we wanted to put all of our eggs in that basket of just providing for our home. We chose to move into a more modest home. Some people, though, today wanting to move into a home don't even have that choice. They're having to rent either an apartment or homes because the cost of, um, new homes are very expensive. And there are a lot of people who are already hurting and struggling, and there are going to be more people hurting and struggling. So if there's anything that we can do, you know, we've heard from Ms. Monica Delancy often speaking about this disparity amongst people, um, who are not making living wages and who continue to struggle in our county. And these are things that I think COVID is putting smack dab in front of us to see that disparity, and I hope we can continue to address this so that we can make Cobb County a place that works for everyone. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Chairman. Brad has the slideshow. So I would like to ha- share, um, over this past week how our Cobb County community has come together. Uh, first, the West Cobb, uh, 2020 mask makers donated, as of today, over $1,400, um, or 1,400 masks to our election workers, um, to help, um, keep them safe during the selection ser- uh, season. These masks were, um, all done in a red, white, and blue theme. Um, our senior service employees, of course, have, um, been out delivering meals on wheels, but also, um, here's just a couple pictures of our employees donating various masks, um, that they have, um, made or purchased to show off their personalities. Here's our Parks Department, uh, that have, uh, made masks that all match. They have their Parks Department logo on it. And some other of our, um, employees with their mask, and, um, it would be fun to have a competition to see if everybody could name who the masked people were in these pictures. Um, speaking of elections, um, our Cobb County employees have come together to help get the the elections up and running. Over 100 of our Cobb Parks employees, along with our librarians, uh, came together to help the elections, uh, get set up and be ready for this election, um, season. And then also my assistant, Ryan Williams, who is featured in this picture, um, has been temporarily, temporarily reassigned to elections to help, uh, fulfill needs that are over in the elections office. This past Saturday, we had, um, the first Georgia grown-to-go here in Cobb County. Uh, this was an exciting event at, um, Al Burris, um, or Al Bishop Sports Complex. We had over, Brad, you can go ahead and change the slide. We had over 2,070 pre-orders, um, and then we had 686 day-of-sales orders. Go ahead and flip the side, slide. Um, 324 of the boxes that were purchased, um, were donated to our local nonprofits. Uh, this allowed over 1,200 ears of corn, cucumbers, yellow squash, zucchini, bell peppers to be donated, over 600 pounds of onions, 300 bags of green beans, and over 300 pints of blueberries. Uh, these will all be distributed to, um, families throughout this week. None of this would have been able to happen without, um, our Parks Department, which again stepped up to help see this event come through. Uh, we did this in a very short time. It started out with, uh, Sheriff Warren and Mayor Tumlin, uh, getting with Commissioner, Ag Commissioner Gary Black with this idea, and, um, with help of the Cobb Chamber, we pretty much brought this event together in a little less than two weeks, and so here's a couple of our sponsors. And JRM was instrumental at helping us, um, get this product moved on Saturday. So again, thank you to our community for all that they have done. And then, oop, there was supposed to be one more slide. Also, um, this past weekend, um, our Parks Department hosted our first movie night at Lost Mountain Park. Uh, Saturday was a success. Uh, folks were able to come in. They received a bag of goodies, which allowed a craft to be done with, um, the kids prior to the start of the movie. Um, and the craft was donated by Kaiser Permanente and Kennesaw Pediatrics. So thank you very much for, oh, here we go. Um, thank you very much for their support in, um, giving our, um, attendees something to do, and the Parks Department will be looking to do this, um, on a rotating basis every three weeks, so we look forward to them coming back. Again, that's all I have.
Are you good, Commissioner Gamble? Okay, thank you for those slides. They're really great, and I saw you're, you're out there this weekend, so, uh, thank you for all you're doing for your district and for the county. Commissioner Ott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, first off, I want to start by thanking Commissioner Gamble and everybody else that set up Saturday's event. Um, I had the opportunity to work there for a short while, and, um, it was, it was a lot of fun and very rewarding, um, seeing all the folks come through and, um, all the food that was sold, and, and our opportunity to help Georgia farmers. So, great job. Um, the next thing we have here is a, uh, this is a picture of the county's hub for coronavirus, and, um, if we get it to work here, we're gonna scroll through and show, um, all the hubs that, uh, are part of, maybe not. But if you go to the Cobb GIS page and you click on the coronavirus hub, there's a whole bunch of hubs in there. The newest one was put on, um, for the Parks Department, and it was designed, because we're not gonna have summer camps, it basically is gonna, um, there, our team created this survey for local citizens and business owners to, uh, kind of fill out and tell parents where there's things that their kids could do this summer. So, um, kudos to the GIS and the Parks folks. Um, for the folks in East Cobb, there is, uh, there's some drilling, some holes on Lower Russell Road, and there is a lane closure sign that's up, and just want to let folks know that, that is the Atlantic Gaslight Company. They're doing some, uh, drilling holes to take measurements off the, um, some of their existing gas lines. Once they're done, they will come in and, um, grind it down and repave it. And finally, uh, we know we've talked a lot about food. This period of time now is, um, the scouting for food, uh, food drive program, and Troop 1011 is one of the mini scout troops collecting food, and they are collecting food this week, um, until May 30th. And if you want to drop off the food, you can go to Mount Bethel United Methodist Church in the back corner of the parking lot and drop off the food. Um, there is, on my newsletter and on my website, if you click on the newsletter link, you can find out more of the details. And the final thought, um, I'm not sure how many of you caught in, uh, Commissioner Gamble's mask pictures. Um, I was in one of them. Only she and I know which one it was.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. The only comment I have. I want to, I want to thank the Commissioners, um, for all their hard work, and I think Commissioner Cupid said, this, this is not, this is not easy. But I think one testament to how effective you have been is this morning when I got up, because I, I, I took the day off yesterday and got reacquainted with my wife's, with my most expensive hobby called master gardening. And right now on my phone, I have 485 emails. That just tells me that people believe in this board, that they believe that they're, that if they talk to us, we're gonna hear them. We're gonna do the best we can to respond to their needs, because if they, if they didn't believe that, I wouldn't have 4,500 emails. I think the robust discussions that we have here, both at Agenda Prep and elsewhere, you know, testify that it takes courage to say things sometimes in an open forum that may not be the most popular thing, or we may have disagreements among the board members. But I think if you just take one step back and take a look at what we did today, because people talk about planning how they're gonna use the CARES funding, ladies and gentlemen, we are using it, and it's not perfect, and I, and I own that, okay? Uh, but I think that we're all trying to do what's best for this county, and by your comments, we're gonna shape and it makes this even better in the future, and I'm committed to working with this board to make sure that happens. So I thank you for your openness and your ability to say things, uh, that, you know, I think you realize they fall on a, on an ear that listens and tries to find the milligrams we can use for, for, because we're living in di- difficult times right now, that people are looking to us to make these hard calls, uh, and do what's best for the general public. So, uh, we have the famous, we have the famous, you know, the shout-outs. My shout-out is to the board today and to the staff for all you've done to, to, to let us arrive, which I think is really gonna make Cobb a better place tomorrow for so many people who are in need right now during this time.
Do you have one other announcement?
Okay, Commissioner Cupid, do you have one other announcement, I believe?
Oh, yes. I received something from staff chairman. Uh, there, there's a drive-in movie at Hurt Road Park this weekend on Friday and Saturday. I think they're gonna have The Secret Life of Pets, so if you want to have a little bit of fun to unwind at the end of the week, uh, that's some, that's a service that our staff is continuing to offer in the midst of these times, and I will send that out via my newsletter.
Thank you, and I think that speaks again to the staff we have here who, like us, do everything they can to make this a better place, to ensure the quality of life in Cobb County. So that, thank you so much for all you've done today, and, uh, we're adjourned. So now, thank you so much for all you've done today, and, uh, we're adjourned.